गोपी जाना बाला कुंजभिहार गिरी वरदारे गोपी जाना बाला कुंजभिहार गिरी वरदारे गोपी जाना बाला गोपी जाना बाला जयो राधा माता जयो राधा माता गोपी जाना बाला गिरी वरदारे गोपी जाना बाला गिरी वरदारे जयो गोपी जाना बाला गिरी वरदारे जयो गोपी जाना बाला गोपी जाना बाला गोपी जाना बाला गोपी जाना बाला गिरी वरदारे जामो नकीर बोलो जान जयो राधा माता
जयो राधा माता
गोपी जाना बाला गिरी वरदारे
गोपी जाना बाला
जयो राधा माता
जयो राधा माता
हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरि 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 राम हरि राम 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 हरि हरि
हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरि 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 राम हरि राम 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 हरि हरि
हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरि 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 राम हरि राम 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 हरि हरि
हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरि 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 राम हरि राम 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 हरि हरि
हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरि 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 राम हरि राम 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 हरि हरि
हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरि 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 राम हरि राम 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 हरि हरि
हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरि 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 राम हरि राम 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 हरि हरि
हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरि 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 राम हरि राम 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 हरि हरि
हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरि 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 राम हरि राम 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 हरि हरि
हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरि 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 राम हरि राम 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 हरि हरि
जयो राधा माता
जयो राधा माता
जयो राधा माता
जयो राधा माता
हरि कृष्णा, हरि कृष्णा We would like to welcome all the devotees for this most auspicious association. And we hear from Shilaguru Maharaj on Thursday, every Thursday from 8 to 9 AM. And today, on this auspicious Karthik month, we will be continuing the seminar on Garg Samhita. Last time Guru Maharaj narrated wonderful pastimes from Garg Samhita. So, we will be continuing the seminar, “Hare Krishna”. At the end, there will be the quiz. So please participate in that, “Hare Krishna”.
निर्विषी, शुशन्नवादी, वश्चचत्ता, दिशुदारी, श्रीलक्ष्यावादी So how do you like this? What is going on, the narrations? Do you think it is helping? Krishna’s pastimes are always wonderful. That is why nowadays I don’t give so much seminars on philosophy, rather seminars on pastimes. And... Because at least it keeps you awake. I noticed that... That is how actually I have changed, I mean my way of doing it. I used to give... Initially, I used to give seminars mostly based on philosophical point or Krishna conscious practice points, like Madur Jakada Vriti, Nektav Difoshan, etc. And I noticed that when they would tell a story, everybody would wake up. So you can really imagine what they were doing other time. So then I thought, so if everybody wakes up during stories, then let’s tell stories only. So that is how I started off. The first seminar I gave was on Ramayan. I decided to give Ramayan before Mahabharata because I knew that if I give the seminar on Mahabharata, then it would be difficult to go back to Ramayan. So I started like that, Ramayan, then Mahabharata. And then it went to Krishna’s Pastimes, Mahaprabhu’s Pastimes, Brihad Bhagavatam, etc. And this year, I selected Garga Samhita. Because there are many wonderful anecdotes of Krishna’s pastimes which we don’t really know. As I mentioned, Bhagavatam is actually in a compiled concise form. Bhagavatam is in a concise way. Just giving descriptions of different pastimes but doesn’t go to the details. But some Puranas and Garga Samhita are going to the details. And so I thought these details will be helpful. And through these pastimes, we can get to know that how they are pastimes. The pastimes are Krishna’s playful act. We all are subjected to material nature’s laws of material nature. We all are subjected to our karmic reactions. But is Krishna subjected to karmic reaction? And that is the difference. Krishna is not subjected to karmic reactions, meaning Krishna can do whatever he wants. That is called Ichhamai. Ichha means wish and mai means one who can just fulfill his desire, do whatever he wants. And Krishna is Leelamai. He performs his pastimes. Pastimes are for pleasure. Pastimes, casually spending their time. Like people casually spend their time by going to pubs and clubs. And so there they kind of try to get some pleasure. But Krishna’s way of getting pleasured is just his pastimes. He acts. And by doing that, what happens? Krishna enjoys and Krishna’s devotees enjoy. And the demons burn with envy. That is the difference. Krishna’s devotees enjoy but the demons are... Demons become even more envious. And the demons begin to think, “Oh, yeah...” Krishna is not God, it is just... Like for example, Krishna gives the demons a chance or atheists a chance to think that Krishna is not God. And like, do you remember how Krishna left this planet? A hunter shoot an arrow, where did the arrow hit? On Krishna’s heel, Krishna’s toe actually, his foot. And Krishna left his body. And even an ordinary person doesn’t leave his body by being hit in the toe, right? And Krishna, who is supreme personality of God... What to speak of Krishna, even the Kshatriyas. Kshatriyas are such powerful warriors that during the battle, all of their own body will be shot by arrows. Still they will keep on fighting. That is how powerful the Kshatriyas used to be. There is a temple in South India. It is called Parthasarati Temple. And in that temple, Krishna’s deity is poked with... All over his body is poked. You know why? Because when Krishna came after the battle of Kulkish, they are there, that is how he was. His whole body was pierced with arrows. So as a chariot here, as the chariot driver, he was getting shot by arrows. What to speak of the warriors? You remember how Vishma Dev? His whole body was pierced with arrows. And that is why when he fell, he fell on a bed of arrows. Like the arrows not only hit him, went through his body, all the arrows. So that is how powerful the Kshatriyas used to be. So this is how... Then the demons get a chance, the atheists get a chance. “Oh, see, I told you, Krishna is an ordinary person. He got shot by a hunter and he died.” Krishna says, “Fine. If you want to think that, go ahead and think that. If you want to go away from me, go away from me. But I am giving you a chance also to come close to me.” So what happens through Krishna’s pastimes? The devotees become attracted to Krishna. When the devotees hear Krishna’s pastimes, they feel more attraction to Krishna, more closeness to Krishna. But when the demons hear, they just become even more envious. That is what you will see, like Shishupal, Jara Santa, all these demons, they are always so envious of Krishna, blaspheming Krishna. Don’t want to change, admit that he can be the supreme personality of God. What to speak of supreme personality of God if their attitude is Krishna is less powerful than they were? They are more powerful than Krishna. Jara Santa was defeated by Krishna 17 times. He was defeated 17 times. But on the 18th time Krishna let him. Each time Krishna actually let him go. And when on the 18th time Krishna left the battlefield, ran away from battlefield, then he said, “Oh, see, finally I defeated Krishna.” That is their attitude. Krishna would have killed him, of course. I will also tell you why Krishna didn’t kill him. Okay, since I mentioned it, I will tell you why Krishna didn’t kill him. Why Krishna didn’t kill Jara Santa? Because Jara Santa was Krishna’s recruiting agent. Jara Santa was recruiting the demons, bringing them to Krishna for Krishna to slaughter them. Krishna came to kill the demons. There are so many demons for Krishna to go and instead of him going killing them, Jara Santa was bringing them to Krishna. And Krishna was killing. So that is how Krishna’s pastimes are, such wonderful effect. So in this way, Krishna was performing his pastimes. One day, there was a demon called Shakatasula, Satakas... Shakatasula. Krishna was just a few months old. There was a celebration. I think Krishna is three months celebration. Vedic culture is full of celebration. They get an occasion, they celebrate it, they make you festive. Just like nowadays, there is an occasion, there is a holiday. But the actual thing was, there was occasion, there is a holy day, not holiday. Those are holy days to celebrate. And they would celebrate. They would get up in the morning, make all kinds of arrangement, sometimes they would perform sacrifices and they would invite everybody, they will come with gifts. Those who will come, they also list with gifts. And that will be an occasion to dress them up so nicely and wear their most expensive jeweleries. They would come there and they would participate in this festivity. And they will sing and dance. They will sing and dance and then they feast. So this is how what the Vedic culture is. Chant and dance and feast, sing and dance and feast. That is what people try to do also in the material platform. They also try to sing and dance and feast. But in order to sing and dance, they have to become free from their anxiety. So as the first thing they do when they go to this kind of occasion, drink. Their life is so stressful, so miserable that they have to... In order to get into a joyful mood, they have to forget their anxiety. And the way to do it is drink. And more they drink, more joyful they become. More they drink, more boisterous they become. And then finally, they lose their consciousness and roll in the gata. Instead of going home, they find their bedroom in the gata. So that is the... Actually in here only, in Holland I had a... Once I had a very nice experience. We are very friendly, one very family became quite close to us. They were from some town, some city, maybe, I don’t exactly remember. He was quite a well-known doctor and was quite young also. And they became close to us. And so sometimes we used to go and have program in their house. And one day, the wife was telling me, “You know, my life has changed so much from those days.” And she was expressing that how joyful it was. She said that previously also on Saturday night, Saturday night, we used to have party. And in the morning, she said, “I would look down to the hall and I would see the whole place is completely devastated. And many people also couldn’t even go home, they are just lying there drunk.” And she used to getting... Already she had a headache from drinking last night and now she got a bigger headache, now she has got to clean all the place. But then she was telling that, “But now you all come and you all also have the program Saturday evening. And I don’t have to do anything. You bring prasad, you bring everything, you all serve and after serving you just clean the place up. And now on the next morning, when I look down, the whole place looks so neat and clean and the memories of that last evening were so fresh.” So that is the difference between our festivity and their festivity. That is the difference between materialistic life and spiritual life. Spiritual life leads to joy and material life leads to misery. Kavala Mathi, do you remember that family? No? I see.
The dentist?
Ah?
Gauri Sundar, the dentist?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The wife Ethila?
I don’t remember. Right, 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 yeah, yeah. Where were they? Like, were they in Belgium or in Holland?
The Holland.
They were in Holland, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, right. So this is how the life changes in Krishna consciousness. How do you all feel? Is it a better way to live?
Hariboah.
Hariboah. So... And that is what Krishna's pastime is. So if our spiritual activities are so joyful, can you imagine how joyful Krishna's pastimes is? How joyful it is to be in the spiritual world with Krishna? So that is why it is so important that we celebrate in Krishna consciousness, just to get an idea how joyful the spiritual life can be. So on such an occasion, when everybody was in such festivity, one day, I mean, on that day Krishna was kept on a cradle next to a cart. They're coward people, so they carry utensils and things and today was a festivity, so they must have brought so many things in the cart. They used to transport those days through bull of carts. And Krishna was there, so one of Kamsa's associates, they got to know, Kamsa got to know that Putana got killed. And so he suspected, maybe this is the one who is hariking as a child. So another demon came, this demon doesn't have a body, didn't have a body. Shakatasura. So he was without his body, he was just... His idea was that he will kill Krishna. But Krishna was lying on the cradle next to a cart. And this demon was waiting, so Krishna just touched the cart with his little foot. Children throw their legs. So in such occasion, his legs, his foot started, touched the cart. The cart collapsed with all this heavy weight and the demon died. And the thing is, after the demon died, his life air came out and merged into, entered into Krishna's body. So everybody was surprised, what happened? All of a sudden, cart collapsed. And so the little children who were there, they told what happened? Krishna kicked the cart, the cart collapsed. Everybody thought, "How can it be possible?" The cart was weighing so heavy with so much weight. And this child just touched it with the foot and it collapsed, how can it be? So this is Krishna's yoga maya, they were still considering that Krishna is a little child. So Bhulasha at that point asked, "So who is the Shakatasura?" So if he was told that Shakatasura was a son of Hirannaksha named Utkat. And once he went to Lomashamuni's ashram and broke some trees. And Lomashamuni was very upset that this demon acted in that way, broke the trees. So he cursed him that you become bodyless. So when he was cursed, the demon actually fell at his feet and said, "Please forgive me." And the thing is, when the words went out of the mouth of such exalted Brahmanas, the word became, "It must happen." But Lomashamuni said, "Okay, since I said you have to get a body like that, but when Krishna comes in Duaparjuga, by the touch of his feet, he will get delivered." So that is how Shakatasura, in one hand, although he was a demon and cursed by devotee Lomashamuni, but he also got the benefit of being delivered by Krishna. Therefore, it's also an advantage to be cursed by a devotee. Because cursed, being cursed by a devotee, you have the bad effect, but it also has the good effect. The good effect is you derive some benefit. Like... So, so when there were so many such disturbances, Putana came to kill, there was Shakatasura and then also came Trinavarta. Came Trinavarta, he came as a whirlwind, another associate of Krishna. And he tried to kill Krishna when Krishna was on his mother's lap. Mother Jasoda was having Krishna on her lap and all of a sudden this terrible storm came. Trinavarta, whirlwind, not only just a wind, but floating, flying trinas. That drying grass and thorns and weeds and everything. And stone chips. Not only the whole place became dark, but all these people could keep their eyes open because all this flying stone shapes and grass weeds. So before Trinavarta came, Krishna could see that... Krishna could understand that Trinavarta is coming. And she felt, he felt that if he stayed on his mother's lap, then Trinavarta may carry his mother also. So that's why Krishna became very heavy. Mother Jasoda couldn't keep Krishna on her lap, so she placed Krishna on the floor. And as soon as he did that, as soon as she did that, immediately Trinavarta took Krishna up into the sky. Trinavarta's intention was that he would take Krishna to a great height and drop him. And that's how he would kill him. So Krishna let Trinavarta go to a great height and then when Trinavarta wanted to drop Krishna, Trinavarta felt that Krishna's arm is around his neck. So he tried to free himself from the grip of Krishna's arm. But the more he tried to free himself, the tighter became the grip. Like a vice. It became so tight that Trinavarta couldn't breathe. And then, he being unable to maintain himself in that great height, he just fell. And from that great height, he fell on top of a big boulder, big stone. Left his body. So Trinavarta escaped. So some Gopis started to chastise Mother Jasoda. At that time, you dropped the child on the floor? How careless you are? You saw the storm coming? So this is Krishna's pastimes. So we can see how family members react with each other. They're not seeing, they're thinking that how careless it is of Mother Jasoda that when such a big storm was coming, instead of keeping the child with her, she left the child on the floor and now the child could have been taken away by this demon. So again Bhulasha asked, "Who is that Trinavarta?" In his previous life, he was a king named Shahasraksha. And he was enjoying with thousand beautiful women near Durvasamuni's ashram. And Durvasamuni seeing that became very upset with him. And he cursed him that he would become a demon. So this king fell at his feet and Durvasamuni also told him that, "Okay, when in Duaparjuga Krishna will come, he'll deliver you." Although he'll become a demon, although he'll become enemy to Krishna, but he will be delivered by Krishna. So in this way, in Gokul, there were so many calamities, so many disturbances. So the one day, one morning, the coward people, senior coward members became... They had an assembly and they discussed what to do, like there are so many calamities. So what to, how to overcome, what to do now? So the senior most Gob is Sanananda. Sanan, Sanananda, Satnanda. So Sanananda actually told them that, "Yes, these are very bad, very inauspicious signs. The demons are coming, creating disturbance. And we have to protect our children, so let us go somewhere else." Where to go? So he started to describe the glory of Brindavan. And he advised, "Let's all go to Brindavan." And in this way, the Krishnan Badaram along with the Gopis and Gopas settled in Brindavan. There is some beautiful descriptions in Gopalchampu by Shilpa Jivagusra. He actually mentioned that they did not really decide where to settle, where to go. So they said, "Let's leave and we'll find some suitable place." And so then they arrived in Brindavan. And it was already quite late in the day. So in one hand, they felt, "This is such a beautiful place, let's spend the night here." And so they all decided to spend the night there. And so that night Krishna told Vishakarma, "So you build palaces for every family." So in the morning, when they woke up, they found there are all beautiful palaces. And each palace has a nameplate to whom this, to which family it belongs to. So this is another description, how they settled down in Brindavan. The descriptions of the palaces are beautiful. I mean unimaginable actually. Like not only the palaces were built of gold, the walls of the houses were built of gold. Gold, solid gold walls. So that is the opulence. But the Brajvasims, they don't care about the material comfort and material luxury, material glamour. Their only attraction is to Krishna. But Krishna makes arrangement for them in the most wonderful way. So although the devotees do not want anything material, but Krishna provides. And when Krishna provides, devotees accept. So... In this way, they just settled in Brindavan. And when they were in Brindavan, so many wonderful things happened. Like, one day Krishna was... You know the stealing of the butter incident? Another name of Krishna is? Makkanchor. Okay. Krishna steals butter. Krishna became a little big by that time. But he would go to different houses. And he would... He would go through the door because he is coming to mischief, do mischief. So they would climb on each other's back and scale the wall. And they would go inside in this way. And the last one will be pulled up by hand or by rope. Then they would enter into the house of the Gopi and they would see all the pots of butter hanging from rafters. So they would climb on each other's back, lower the rafters, lower the butter pots. And then they would eat the butter. Krishna would eat and Krishna would feed all his friends and finally Krishna would feed the monkeys. The monkeys also would follow him to see fun, to watch the fun. So Krishna would tell them, "Come and take some butter." And the monkey had been so full of eating butter, he said, "Okay, no, I'm completely full." And Krishna would say that, "This butter is so bad that even the monkeys don't want to eat it." Saying that Krishna would break the pot. And then Krishna would pinch the sleeping child of the Gopi. You pinch a sleeping child, what will happen? He'd cry out. And laughing Krishna with his friends would run out of the house. So this Gopi, whose name is Prabhavati, she went and reported to Mother Jasoda. Jasoda, "You see, this is what your son does, he has become such a naughty boy." And Mother Jasoda would say that Krishna was with me all this while. The Gopi said, "Oh, you mean I'm lying?" "No, but the thing is that when you said that Krishna went and did all that to your house, but Krishna was actually with me." So Gopi said, "Okay, you don't believe me, right? So I'll catch him and bring him to you." So Gopi Prabhavati was waiting. And then Krishna came. This is funny, one day, one afternoon. And he lowered the butter pots, climbing on other boys' back, one after another. In Gujarat, there is still one festival. What's it called? Who is a Gujarati here? There's so many Gujaratis but don't know about Gujarat. What's it called? Now it's coming out. Okay, whatever it is. The winner gets the one they climb on, it's kept quite high. And they have to climb up, maybe sometimes on twenty people. And they would go up and lower the pot. So anyway, the pot was the... The butter pot was lowered, so many of them, they ate it, ate the butter, fed the butter to the monkeys. When the monkeys also want to eat them, they say, "This butter is so bad that even the monkeys don't want to eat it." that even the monkeys don't want to eat it. Saying that, they broke the pot. And pinched the child. The child woke up with a shriek and laughing, they all were running out of the house. But the Gopi was hiding behind the door. As soon as Krishna came, trying to come out, leave the room, run out of the house, she caught Krishna. Okay, finally I caught you. Come, I'll take you to your mother. She wouldn't believe me. Krishna said, please let me go, I promise I won't come to your house anymore. If you take me to my mother, mother will be really upset, she'll chastise me, maybe she'll beat me up also. And the Gopi said, nothing doing, finally I caught you. The other day, your mother almost told me that I was a liar, so today I'll prove to her. And so Krishna was appealing, please let me go, please let me go. So the Gopi took Krishna on her back and she went to Mother Jashoda. And said, Jashoda, now you believe me, I caught him red-handed today. And this is what he had done with all these boys. He is a ringleader of all the boys. And Mother Jashoda started to laugh. Prabhavati said, still now you're laughing? I caught him red-handed and brought him to you. Mother Jashoda said, yeah, see who you brought. She looked up and saw she's carrying her own son. So she was surprised. She could still hear Krishna's voice ringing in her ears. Please let me go, please let me go, I promise I'll never come to your house. If I go, my mother will chastise me. And now she's seeing that she's carrying her own child. But what to do? Like she completely embarrassed with a heavy heart and drooping head. She started to walk towards the house. And then she heard the sound of laughter. It's Krishna laughing. Krishna, you are such a rascal. You embarrassed me in front of your mother in this way, assuming the form of my child. Krishna said, what to do? He says, somehow I had to defend myself. And anyway, this time I became your son. Next time if you can catch me and take me to my mother, I'll become your husband. So this is how Krishna in this way Krishna submerges his devotees in an ocean of ecstasy. So this is Brindavan. And Krishna is the leela purushottam. He is performing his leela, he's performing his pastimes. And by performing his pastimes, he is submerging his devotees in an ocean of joy. Are you getting drowned in that ocean of ecstasy? Or are you still floating? So, so this is how Krishna is performing his pastimes. Now this leads to another pastime. Mother Jashoda felt that why does Krishna go to other houses to steal butter? In my house, there is so much butter, Krishna doesn't need to steal butter. But is it that their butter is more delicious, that's why Krishna goes and steals it? And so she felt that she should create the real good butter. She selected the best cows. And she fed the cows with the best grass. And she decided to make butter out of this milk. And one day she was boiling this milk. And Krishna was on, and at that time Krishna just came to her. And she could see that Krishna actually wanted to drink her milk, mother's milk. So she came to Krishna, put, took Krishna on her lap and gave her breast to drink milk. Krishna was happily drinking his mother's milk. And then all of a sudden, Mother Jashoda remembered, oh, the milk is on the fire and it will be spilling over. So she quickly put Krishna on the floor and she went to take care of the milk, boiling milk. Krishna was happily drinking his mother's milk and all of a sudden, his mother put him down on, from her lap and ran to attend the boiling milk. Krishna was really upset. For first few minutes, he was quite stunned. Took him some time to realize what actually happened. Then he cried for a while, being, feeling hurt that his mother treated him in this way. And then he felt angry. I was drinking your milk so happily. But you went to take care of that milk and that also is for my sake. For my pleasure, for my joy. What is the use of that? So Krishna found a stone there and he hid that pot for churning butter. There was a big clay pot and it was filled with butter and water and they churned. And as a, milk and yogurt and water. And from the yogurt comes out the butter, it flows. So that's how they made butter. I'm sure many of you know how to make butter. Yeah, how many of you know how to make butter? Okay, and how many of you learned from me how to make butter today? The secret is that you have to put a lot of water. Sometimes you make a mistake by not putting enough water. And you keep on churning, butter doesn't come. Therefore you have to put a lot of water while churning, keep on adding water, keep on adding water. And then the butter will float and then you separate the butter. And what you get is butter milk. In Hindi it's called chaas. It's very good for digestion. In India, it's a custom, especially North Indian, to have chaas in the afternoon. They have a heavy meal and then to digest it, they eat butter milk. And so Krishna broke that pot. The pot was full of water and butter and yogurt. So the whole room got flooded. So Krishna went to the next room. And he climbed up on top of a mortar to lower the butter pot. And when Krishna was doing that, at that time, Mother Jashoda taking care of the milk, she came. And she saw the room is flooded with the water and milk, butter milk and yogurt from the pot. And Krishna is nowhere to be seen. So she realized that little boy who had done that. So she went to the next room. And then she saw Krishna lowering the butter pot, standing on the mortar. So Krishna saw his mother coming. So he jumped out of the mortar. Seeing Mother Jashoda, Krishna jumped out of the udukhal, the mortar and ran. And Mother Jashoda ran after Krishna. So finally, Mother Jashoda caught Krishna. And seeing the stick in his mother's hand, Krishna became afraid. Seeing the stick in his mother's hand, Krishna started to cry. And he started to wipe the tears out of his eyes, which were full of fear. You remember Damodar Ashatam? Soon you'll be singing it again, month of October. So that's what happened. So Krishna ran, Mother Jashoda ran after him, caught him. Seeing the stick in his, in her hand, Krishna started to cry. Mother Jashoda saw that the child has already been afraid, so he dropped the stick. But at the same time, she felt that some correction must be done, the boy is becoming too much. So she decided to tie him up. In the same mortar on which he climbed and now I'll tie you up with that. But Mother Jashoda, as Sri Buddha, rope around Krishna's belly to tie him up. Found that the rope is two fingers too short. And in this way, Mother Jashoda tried again and again and again with ropes after ropes. Still it's two fingers too short. Mother Jashoda was sweating out of exhaustion. So Krishna felt, okay, my mother is quite exhausted, so let me, let her tie me up. So Krishna allowed Mother Jashoda to tie him up. So then she tied him up with the mortar. And Mother Jashoda went to her dwelling and take care of her household chores. And so Krishna tied like that. He stood there for some time. And then he thought, how long can I just keep sitting and standing in one place? So he started to pull the mortar. And as a result of that, the mortar, which was standing, it fell. Now the mortar looks like a wheel, like two ends around. So Krishna invented a new game, pulling the mortar with tied up, that is tied up to your belly. Oh, he went round and round and round with that way. And on Nandamaharaj's koteer, there was, there were two jamal Arjan trees, huge trees. And Krishna thought, let me go through that tree. So he passed through the trees, two trees, but the mortar got stuck. Krishna pulled, pulled and as a result of his pulling, those two trees fell off. It's huge tree, fell like that, created a big noise. So Mother Jashoda came running, totally in anxiety. Oh, my child was in the thing, in the koteer. I hope nothing happened to him. But then she found that Krishna in between those two trees. So Krishna, at least he saved. She started to thank the demigods and Vishnu, Narayana, everybody. And Lord, you're so kind that you saved my child. Without knowing that her child is the source of Nala. So then Krishna went, Mother Jashoda went and released Krishna from there. And everyone was surprised, what happened? There was no storm, there was no wind, there was nothing. All of a sudden, these trees fell like that without any reason. And the boys, little boys were there, they started to describe. This is how Krishna was playing and the mortar got stuck and as Krishna pulled, the trees fell off. And not only that, as the trees fell, two divine personalities appeared out of those two trees. They appeared there and they started to say something to Krishna in some language we don't understand. And then offering obeisances to Krishna, they all, both of them went back up in the sky. Some thought, these little children started to fabricate such fantastic stories. And some thought that maybe that's what happened after all, Krishna is so wonderful. Mother Nandamaharaj came and then he heard, he was really upset with Mother Jashoda. He was so careless, tie up the child, if tied up the child, if something happened to him, what would have happened? So Mother Jashoda accepted, just chastised him. And so now who are those two personalities who appeared from those two trees? Two sons of Kuvera, Nala Kuver and Manigreva. They were sporting with absurder in the celestial ganja, Alakhanadha. And they were sporting in the water naked. And at that time, Naradmuni was passing by. So seeing Naradmuni, all the girls became embarrassed, upset. They immediately covered themselves. But Nala Kuver and Manigreva, those two sons of Kuver, were so drunk that they just stood there shamelessly. So Naradmuni cursed them. You are not fit to live in heavenly heavens. Shameless, no consideration, no concern for any custom and ethics, morality. So you go, since you're standing naked, stand naked for thousands of years as a tree. And as a result of that, they became two jamal Arjan trees. But as they, when they became cursed, then they came back to their senses. Then all the alcohol effect was gone. My God, what happened? We have been caused to become trees. So they failed at Naradmuni's feet, please, please forgive us. Naradmuni said, look, when a word goes out of my mouth, it's bound to happen. So since it has been, it has been uttered by me. You have to, it will happen to you. you have to, it will happen to you. But when Krishna comes, then by his mercy, you will be delivered.” So that’s how these two jamal trees, two arjun trees were... Appeared as two arjun trees in the koteer of Nandamaharaj. And Krishna actually delivered them. So this is how this Damodar leela was performed by Krishna.
Hare Krishna. So... Hare Krishna Maharaj. We have the association of... His Holiness Bhakti Pramam Maharaj also with us. So I request Maharaj to kindly read the quote of the day.
Yes.
Yes Maharaj, I’m sharing.
Yes, thank you. Twenty-eighth October, twenty-eighth October, a Krishna-conscious leader is one who takes care of his followers in the best possible way. The more we take care of our followers, the more they will be inspired to serve and the more this movement will spread far and wide. June seventeen, July twenty eighth October nineteen ninety-seven. Guru Maharaj, in my initiation time, Guru must told me, this thing means taking care of devotees.
Yes Maharaj.
Thank you very much.
Maharaj, we have a quiz also, so devotees are attempting it.
Yes.
I will show the... That as well.
Mukundripepu. Seventy-seven percent, first position. Nambhi. Second position. Arpitapal, third, Shitanandani. Chamchindiri. Shriyaditya. Chintamunidashi, Shantika, Anittha. Sangaya. Picholra, Indubodhini Rada. Charmini Radhika, Sritaradhika, Anadigori, Ispati. Okay.
Devotees are attempting now also.
For two days?
Yeah, it’s two days only. The quiz is going on and they are attempting it.
So now latest position, huh? Or Bithapal in first position, Mukundripepu in second position. Shantika, Thaat, Anittha. Chintamunidashi. All correct. Then again refresh. Okay. Shantika. First position, seventy percent. Arpitapal, seventh position. Mukundripepu, third position. Anittha, fourth position. Chintamunidashi, fifth. Chamchindiri, sixth. Shriyaditya, seventh, and Indubodhini. Anittha. Okay, last refresh. This is the position, this is final position, huh? First Shantika, mother is second Arpitapal, third Mukundripepu. And Chamchindiri.
Hare Krishna. So we are very fort... We are very fortunate to hear this Thursday Guru Maharaj class. And we are very fortunate to have association of His Holiness Bhakti Pramam Maharaj also to encourage all of us to attend this class regularly on Thursday. So we request everyone to keep inspiring all of us by regularly coming on this session and hearing the instructions, lessons from Guru Maharaj. So thank you everyone. Jai His Holiness, Bhakti Charu Swami, Guru Maharaj Ki. Shilpa Prapati Ki, Jai Bhairav Pemanande, Hari Hari Bol.
Hari Hari Bol, Hare Krishna.